Thank you all for joining us this morning. And it is March 23rd. If you could please rise, Trustee St. Cypher is going to lead us in the indication.
Lord, thank you for the privilege and the opportunity of being here this morning, for the life that you give us and for this institution that we all care so much about. Thank you for the strength that you've given us to get to this point in the semester and this crazy school year that we've had over the past 12 months. I thank you for our faculty, our administrators, our staff here. Most importantly, Lord, we thank you for the students that you brought to our doorstep. I ask that you help all of us lead with wisdom, with patience, keeping the students first and foremost in our minds, and we pray for their success both here and later in life, Lord. I ask that you give us the ability to offer gentle responses in the place of anger, frustration as we discuss different things, as we move forward from here and go about the business of our week. I thank you so much for the opportunity that we all have, and I ask that you help us to take it seriously each and every day. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I believe in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, first, we'd like to welcome everybody back for the last part of the spring semester. I hope that you all enjoyed your break that you had two weeks ago, and I know last week was a little different because we had, the other schools were out on break, so glad to have everybody back and focused. I know for me, this week is a new week and a new beginning for the spring. So, thank you so much. And any board members have any comments this morning? Vice Chair Bello or Trustee Kidwell?
We're getting back in the groove of things, it seems.
I'll say, I've had the privilege of a lot of extracurricular SPC activities of the late, and it's just always such a pleasure to deal with this team and to have the people who represent us. So, chair in the audit, which I, selection committee, have no business doing. And the naming rights committee, and I appreciate being asked and being involved, and it's always just such a pleasure.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you. Before we go forward, if you have your cellphone near the microphones, if you could take the vibration off or something so that it does not interrupt the recording, that would help us out a lot. Thank you. So, I have some spotlights I want to share, people who are doing fantastic things at the college. I want to start with Dr. David Manson, our music professor and founder of the Music Industry and Recording Artists Program. He was recently named the recipient of a music composition grant from Creative Pinellas, and the grant is in the tune of $5,000. Good job, Dr. Manson. Also, Dr. Tashika Griffith was accepted to the Harvard University's Graduate School of Education to participate in the Ensuring Equitable Student Success in Higher Ed Program among several people to enter that program. And then our very own Dr. Hector Laura, he's our new AVP of budgeting. He completed a paper that came from his dissertation called Strategies for Rural Small Startup Business Success, and it was published by the Small Business Institute. And so, Dr. Hector, very proud of that work. Also, SPC received a $100,000 grant and support from Perkins for training students, and so very proud of that. And April is Community College Awareness Month. SPC already has its plans for April in celebrating our wonderful institution and what we do to help build economic mobility. We're also working with the Community Health Center to help us bring on COVID testing at SPC and the vaccine. So, hang in there, we're almost there on that, so I'm very proud of that. And this Saturday, we will be hosting Keys to Manhood, which is going to be a virtual initiative, and our speaker is Marquez Valdez-Scantlin. He's an NFL player from St. Petersburg, and so we're very proud of that work, and that's our highlights for today.
Wonderful. Thank you. We do have some public comments this morning, so, oh, just one. Ms. Sonia Fernetta.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sonia Fernetta. Good morning, Board of Trustees. I have spoken before, and once more, I am here to ask, on behalf of the adjunct instructors of St. Pete College, for the Board to pass the union contract. We are working teachers, we're busy teaching classes, and we have worked together on getting a fair contract with no real economic impact on the college, and ratification should not be delayed anymore. So, I, along with other adjuncts, am asking you to ratify the contract today. We are happy to go into further negotiations, but it will take more of our time and that of the administration. So, why not just accept our contract? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the review and approval of minutes. There are motion?
So, move them out here.
Second.
Any amendments or modifications to the minute? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Gardner?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Williams, Chair Cole, and the trustees. I do have two update memos for you on some pending matters, which I will leave with you today, and if there's any questions after you take a look at it, please feel free to call my side for Dr. Williams. So, I'll leave these after the meeting. Thank you.
I can say that the General Counsel's Office has been busy lately and successful, so we appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you. So, moving on to our substantive portion of our meeting, quickly, and Dr. Katie Schultz, welcome. Congratulations on the new grant that Dr. Williams just spoke about, too.
All right. Thank you for having me here today, Chair Cole, President Williams, members of board. I'm Katie Schultz, I'm the executive director, sorry about that, and the executive director of grants development here at the college, and I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on what we're doing to support the initiatives that you all have set forth, as well as go over some of the CARES funding that we've received from the federal government. First off, we are a department of five, myself, as well as a dedicated grant writer, a dedicated grant manager, a bit of a hybrid position that does both pre and post award, as well as a senior administrative specialist. It takes a village, both to write a grant as well as to manage it, so we do work very closely with grants accounting, marketing, legal, purchasing, a lot of faculty and staff who do grants as kind of all other duties as assigned, so we run the gamut across the college. Bit about our philosophy, there's more grants out there than we could ever possibly go after, and so we have to make sure that we're focused and intentional about our approach. We look at impact, both long-term and short-term, on the college. What's the return on investment for the institution to go after a particular grant? We also look at how we're addressing, the grants are going to be addressing the strategic priorities that you all have set forth. We want to make sure that we're aligning with the vision and the future of the institution. And we also look at capacity and resources. Grants often are a one-time opportunity, so we have to look at what it allows us to do, what other resources across the college are needed in order to execute a grant, and that's really kind of some of the key pieces that we work with when making a decision. We believe that not all money is good money. We believe that while a lot of zeros in a grant award are exciting, you know, sometimes the smallest grant leads to more relationships or larger grants in the long term. So, a $100,000 grant might show the state that we are a great investment, and it leads to more opportunities, and so we consider that when we go after funding. That being said, we do measure ourselves based on how much money we bring in. So, this bar graph here shows you roughly the last two-plus years. In FY '19, we were down considerably staffing, which is why that's a bit lower that year, but as you can see, we're close to doubling where we were two years ago. We have a couple months left in this fiscal year, and we're already a million dollars above where we were last year. This does account for federal, state, local, and foundation grants, both new and renewal grants. Something I want to note is when Janet comes up and talks to you guys about the operational budget, this money is not included in that. Grants go into a special operating, a special, I'm going to forget the name of it, a restricted fund. So, we have to, you know, because it has to be used for certain specific activities. And so, it allows us, though, to support the overall operational budget and fill in maybe some of the gaps that the traditional operational budget might not be able to do. For instance, annually, about 80 to 100 SPC staff are either partially or fully funded by grants. That includes faculty, advisors, project coordinators, tutors. We're also able to buy equipment, start new programs. A lot of initiatives are beginning with a grant, and so we're able to kind of allow for fun and exciting things to do, try new things, stuff like that. Getting the grant sometimes is the easier of the two options. Managing the grant really is a challenge. Once we get a grant, the college's reputation is at stake. It is imperative that we manage these grants. We meet, if not exceed, the funders' expectations. Well-run and managed grants lead to more grants, but the opposite also happens, so we have to make sure that we are in compliance with the funders' expectations, as well as federal and state laws and guidelines. And so, there's a lot that goes into the management of grants. Because many of our grants are multi-year, while we may be bringing in $9 to $10 million in a fiscal year, we're managing around $20 million in that fiscal year, roughly 35 to 37 grants. The light blue is what we didn't expect to be managing over the last two years is the CARES funding. So, that, what we bring in is in addition to the several million dollars that we've received in CARES funding. So, I wanted to pull out some of the strategic initiatives that you all have identified in the last few years and kind of show you what we're doing to support them. I think the college, I mean, the timing of the college deciding to focus and restructure workforce was absolutely perfect. Funders were right there. The federal and state government is really focusing on pathways, short-term certificates, and non-credit. So, I mean, this literally is showing you when Dean Ramsey came on board, and that increase is with him and his team, along with the other deans here at the college, really committing to workforce and wanting to go after workforce grants. So, that increase, I think, is in direct correlation with the Board's decision to focus in that area. And then, underrepresented students. I think it was about a year and a half ago at a St. Pete Gibbs Board meeting where Dr. Strickland and Dr. Smiley presented about the African-American male initiative, and there was some conversation about how grants could be used to support that initiative. And we listened. We really went and targeted grants that focus on underrepresented minorities. Now, the 6.7 million that you see in the fiscal year isn't only for African-American males. A lot of grants, you know, want to see for minority students in general, those that are underrepresented in a certain area, but we did and were able to secure several grants that are targeted for the Brother to Brother Program, including one through the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that is funding the first-year salary for our new Brother to Brother Coordinator. So, we are able to really identify and focus on strategic grants that focus, that support the college's strategic initiatives. So, now the CARES funding.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question real quick? So, 15 new and renewed grants as of this year, so far 16 last year. How many are we actually applying for? So, what's our success rate? And if you said that, I apologize.
I did not say that. Our success rate is around 65 to 70%, which is above average across nationally. And it's tricky. I would say, I think we're above average because we're really particular about what we go after.
Right.
We want to know if we're going to spend our time writing it and spend the time of a lot of faculty and staff, that we've got a really good shot at it. So, I think that's part of the reason why we have a higher success rate.
That was part of my point in asking, because I kind of knew the answer, but I think it's important that we remain diligent to the efficiency of how much work we're putting in on the front end, making sure it's something that the college has a good shot at getting and actually needs and will use, and I think you all have done a really good job of maintaining that balance.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Any other questions on the more traditional side of grants before we go to CARES funding?
Okay. Just a little bit of alphabet soup, but I do want to go over the acronyms here. CARES, while often used as kind of an umbrella, it actually only refers to the first round of funding that the college received. So, this was the $6.4 million in student aid, $6.4 million in institutional aid, and the $633,000 that we received because we are designated a Title III institution. Within CARES was the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, or HERF. So, that's really, HERF is probably the more accurate acronym to be using. So, we received that money, and then came CARISA. And in CARISA, we received another $6.4 million in student aid, $22.6 million in institutional aid, and another substantial increase in our Title III funding. The American, I forget the acronym, it just came out, what, two weeks ago? The American Relief Fund, the American Relief Plan, I apologize for that one. The American Rescue Plan just came out. We have received some projections, but based on what I do for a living, I don't go off of projections until they have officially given us an award. We don't really consider it, but it is projecting that we are going to see a substantial increase in the student aid, an increase in institutional aid. We can probably assume that we're going to also receive an increase in the Title III aid. So, the total you see at the bottom is CARES and CARISA only, again, just because the other amounts are projected. The institutional aid and the Title III funding is what I want to focus on today. The student aid, Mike Bennett and his team have just done a phenomenal seamless job getting that to the students that are most in need. That money has just been, I mean, seamlessly administered, and so we're really proud of that and how we're doing. The institutional and the Title III aid is a little bit trickier because it had come out with limited regulations and guidance along with it, and we, as an institution, want to make sure that we are spending it appropriately within the guidelines that are provided and making the best use of that funding.
Sorry, I'm the question person today, I guess. How do they define student aid?
Student aid, depends on if it was CARES or CARISA, but in general, we were asked to identify students that show a significant hardship, financial hardship. We're trying to align it with COVID-19, and we were able to give them, I believe it's about 500 per student, and it goes directly to them. It's almost like another stimulus piece. We don't want it to affect their financial aid or anything like that. It's just simply provided to the student, really no questions asked. It's emergency funding, and it goes directly to them.
Did we have students apply, like a common application, and was that created by SPC, or was that handed to us to provide?
We created it ourselves. We have a website, marketing, and the financial aid team has just done a phenomenal job making sure that students understand, as well as advisors and other folks across the college know, to promote this to students. We do have our own application. We try to not make that a barrier, so it is user-friendly in what we're trying to get from the students, because we understand that that in itself can be a challenge. And then, we actually have to publicly show, so we do have a whole CARES website that I can send a link to, that shows how much we've distributed, the whole process and things like that, because it's federal dollars, we're asked to keep that very public.
How much of, what percentage of the student aid dollars have we distributed?
The 6.4 from the CARES has been distributed completely. I want to say maybe there's like $100,000 or something very, very minimal that is remaining with that first 6.4. The second 6.4 is just being administered now, because when CARISA was released, there's still a gap time between when it's released and we actually get the funds in-house, so we're in the process of distributing the CARISA dollars for the students.
And I also want to add that our foundation gave money directly to students as well while we were working on how to distribute these funds, and so I just want to publicly acknowledge the foundation office and their support, direct support for students, to provide them with money to help them with outside instructional help. It was very, it was very good. And also, another shout-out to financial aid. They did an amazing job. Michael Bennett has been the leader of NASFA, so he understands the national financial aid scene, and he's helped keep us whole on how to move that forward.
And if you can imagine, you know, we get grants for a couple hundred thousand, and we hire a full-time person to administer it, there was none of that. You know, they did this all above and beyond during a crisis, when they're handling all kinds of other stuff, and it really was, I think, recognized on a national level that SPC was a model for especially how we administered the student funds. A little overview of institutional funding and what we're able to use it for. One of the biggest things that, and I'll get into it a little bit, but the loss of revenue is new guidance that we've received, so we are digging deep into how we use this funding for loss of revenue. That just came out late last week, and so we're kind of deciphering what the calculations are related to that. The other pieces for this funding really is about delivery of instruction, remote learning, IT capacity, faculty and staff training as it relates to delivering services and instruction, kind of in this new reality. Some funding is allowed for support services, and then other expenses related to COVID-19, that's your PPE, facility cleaning, those types of things. It's important to note, unallowable, we cannot use this money for enrollment, recruitment, and marketing. We also can't use it for supplanting. So, if the college has already budgeted for something, we can't suddenly say, well, we'll take that money out of the budget and we'll use this money for that. We cannot do that. So, that's a little bit of a tricky piece to it. So, this is a rough breakdown of how we have allocated the initial 6.4, as well as that $633 in Title III funding. So, this is just the CARES Act. As you can see, almost half of it has been allocated to technology upgrades and instructional and remote learning. This is everything from the Honor Lock, which is that, the online testing that we needed to provide to students, upgrades in computers and cameras and all kinds of things. Another almost quarter of this funding is allocated to the facilities, which restructuring our classrooms, cleaning, PPE, things of that. The original Title III money, the $633,000, was the only money in CARES that was allowed for loss of revenue, so we did allocate all of that. That's the 12% that you see there. We did allocate some for student support services. And then, the professional development, it's a small piece of the pie, but if you think about how inexpensive professional development has been over the last year, because most of it's virtual, and then when you're looking at it as a percent of $6 million, you know, $40,000 dedicated to professional development, it's a lot of professional development, but it's a small piece of the pie. So, that's really why that is a lot smaller right now. So, our next steps, as I mentioned, we just received some guidance that we're really excited about and we've been waiting on, related to the loss of revenue, and we anticipate that CARISA, as well as the upcoming funding, will be, a lot of that will be dedicated to that. We have a cross-college team of individuals kind of collecting and identifying needs and determining what we think is appropriate for CARES funding, and we're trying to be strategic. It's a lot of money, and there's an opportunity, while we're addressing the needs in the immediate and with the emergency, the impact of COVID-19 is going to be long-term. So, how do we look at this funding to make changes that will benefit students continuing to learn online and receive services online, technology and things like that? So, we want to make sure that we're being smart with this money and being really intentional about its usage while also addressing immediate needs. So, it's kind of a fun balance. Questions?
Any other questions?
I have just one more. Is there, do we know what the timeline is for fully allocating these funds?
There's a note here, Dr. Williams said to mention that.
That's how well we know each other?
Right now, they have given us through 2022 to distribute the CARES funding. We anticipate towards the end of 2022 for CARISA, and then likely AARP, same thing. So, it's by law, they have to give us one year from the date that they release the funds, but they are extending it just because they understand that their guidance has been a little slow in coming, and, you know, it's an auditing challenge. We want to make sure that we're...
And I also want to add that with the CARES Act funding, it's really for one-time expenses. This isn't something that we're going to have recurring expenses that we pay. That's why salaries are not included in the CARES Act funding. Professional development would be great, but we would not be able to pay salaries out of it because it's for one-time expenses.
Yeah.
With respect to the institutional funding, that clearly bleeds over into benefits to the students, but from a technology standpoint, as we go through, I think, obviously, budgetary losses would be a key component of plugging a hole, but are we allowed to use that institutional funding for the students, for example, computer labs or take-home computers or things for other online?
Yes, and we have used a considerable amount for the purchase of student computers, doing lending libraries, those types of things. We've been able to upgrade, so originally, when the crisis hit, the college did, and the foundation came through with purchasing a lot of computers for students, and what we learned over time is in certain programs, students needed upgraded computers for humanities and like our biology, those types of courses, we needed to get even better computers for these students. So, we have been able to purchase computers for both staff and students.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Williams, I, we skipped over recognitions and spotlight, so we do have an AVP to introduce who's here. Oh, okay. Do you want to say that we did it, hired someone?
Well, we hired a new AVP, but he's not here. He's working with us with technology. We're going to bring him forward next month.
Perfect. That's okay. Be sure I wasn't skipping somebody who needed recognition, so. Thank you. Please.
Good morning. My name is Susan Demers, and I bear the happy burden of the longest title at the college. I am the dean of the School of Public Policy and Administration, Public Safety Administration, Applied Ethics, and Legal Studies. And today, I am here to celebrate one of our wonderful bachelor's degree programs. This is the 10th anniversary of our Public Policy and Administration program. So, before I invite Professor K. up, I want to just give you a little bit of background of the development of the program. We were asked by Dr. Cutler and Dr. Furlong to develop the Public Policy and Administration program in 2009, and the program was designed to be a workforce program for people in government who had, well, let's say, some college but no degree, because that is a big issue across the country, the some college, no degree. And so, our program was pulled together, the curriculum, we got a group of community officials, government officials, we, I think Bill Horn, who was then and is now the city manager of the City of Clearwater, deputy county administrators, court administrators, all kinds of people with specific knowledge, and they looked at not only the theory of public policy and administration, but the knowledge set and the skills, and the classes were very carefully selected to meet those workforce needs. At the end of the program, there is a capstone which asks the students to go out and do a work-based project, amounting to a consultancy on a major government project. Well, in 2010, the state blessed us, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools blessed us, and we began, and we hired Professor Jeff Kronchnaval as our instructor in charge for that program. We then launched our first class in January of 2021. So, with that, I want to invite Professor K. up to tell you a little bit about our program and our wonderful students.
Professor Kronchnaval?
Good morning, Dr. Williams and trustees. Good to see you. That was, gosh, that was like a flashback to 2011. When she hired me, I says, Dr. Demers, why did you select me out of all those candidates? And she put me through three separate interviews. She said, because I want our students to have a job, I want them to make a difference in our community, and I don't want to come in second. Well, I think now, after 10 years, we got some proof that we did exactly that. I can't thank the college enough, I can't thank the people in this room enough, because we didn't do it by ourselves. I can tell you that we have a newsletter in front of you that celebrates some of their accomplishments. The unsolicited remarks that they gave are within the last eight months. We had COVID, otherwise we put the newsletter out about every quarter. But if you don't get excited reading their adventures... But if you don't get excited reading their adventure, then I don't know what else I can do at this point. But the differences that they make, both locally and now nationally, and we have an example today of internationally, keep me coming back. I was supposed to be here three to five years and now I'm on 10 years going in 11. And the picture you see on that newsletter is back when I started, so you can see the difference. But I would like to show you a quick video that we did where, before we show the video, before we hit play, let me set the stage. The college was nice enough to allow us to hold a Public Policy Leadership Speaker Series luncheon, which we'd hold in the fall and the spring. And it was a business luncheon. And for most of our students, that was the first business luncheon they've ever been to. So they would dress up and they would show up and they'd have a white linen tablecloths and a hot meal. We'd bring in a guest speaker. And that guest speaker included the governor, secretary of state, appellate court judges, four-star general, gentleman that ran Border Protection Patrol. And none of those people, none of those guest speakers ever charged us a stipend. They were all friends or people that I had known or Dr. Demers had known, and we brought them in. And so on the way to one of our luncheons, the college said, your old video is really old. We need to update it. And so we ambushed these students, pulled them out of line in the hallway, and just had them speak whatever they wanted to say. So what you're about to see was both risky but rewarding because this is from their own lips. Can I play that video, please?
Public Policy Administration Bachelor Program was designed in 2010, and actually our first course was launched in January of 2011. Since that timeframe, we've had better than 500 students go through our program, either go through it or they're presently in it. And we've had great success. We're different than most bachelor of science programs, especially in public administration, because what we do is we train our students to be job-ready. We're more about practical applications and a lot less about theory.
Our students have found employment in public agencies, in state agencies. They've also found employment as public information officers or government relations officers in the nonprofit sector. And they've also become project managers or government relations officers inside the private sector in the corporate world.
The people that are engaged in this particular program are all generally concerned about what is occurring around them. They want to be engaged, they want to be involved, and they want to make a difference for the people that they're living with.
This program is a great program, especially for international students. When I started this program, I came to this country as a refugee, so I always wanted to work in a government field where I can give back.
When you actually help somebody to where they get a development plan to where they can build their dream home, or they no longer sit in traffic and they get home to, you know, to be with their family, or other things that we get involved in, social services is a big area. You actually do get a real satisfaction because then you see a direct impact on people, you know, and you touch people's lives.
Our public policy program is designed to prepare students to work in state, local, national government.
Luckily, this program prepared me and I had the knowledge to succeed in some of my debates, some of my campaigning, and I ended up winning. And now I'm a Tarpon Springs City Commissioner. So basically, I control legislative decisions with a board of five people, including myself, the vice mayor, the mayor, and then a few other commissioners. And we just recently passed a budget of over $60 million.
This degree is not built on an associate in science degree, but what it does do is it takes people who have associate of arts degrees and builds a practical, business-ready education.
It's an amazing adventure. You will love the ride. You will love the experiences that you pick up. And everything that you learn, not just in the classroom, it will become part of your life. It will become how you conduct business, how you conduct yourself personally. It grows who you are. It shakes you, whether you look to be changed, and even as an older student, because I'm 45 years old. So going back to school, it still shaped me and I was still in a position to grow and to become a better version of myself. It's the best experience that ever happened to me. And I think if anybody else that's looking for that, to become a better version of themselves, SPC is where it's at.
Thank you for that. One in six students, or one in six people are employed by government, and the other five have to come to see government. So we want to make sure that we have good representation. I think our students, and I know Ms. Cole has seen them in different functions, represent us very well. I mean, they're poised, they're articulate, they want to make a difference. The capstones set us up for that difference. We have one capstone this semester, and I didn't mention it the other day, but the gentleman's got to do something for mental health for people transitioning out of jail. I never thought about that all those years that I served with the City of Clearwater. What a smart thing to do. And so he's working on making sure that happens to men and women as they transition back into public society and a number of others. But I got a couple of good examples here of being workforce-ready, making a difference. Here's the first one. These two gentlemen called me one day and they said, Press K, we got to come see you. We got to come see you. I says, what happened? He goes, we got to come see you. And they came over and they gave me a manly hug. We took the picture. And they said, when we first met, when they entered the program, they sat next to each other by accident. They got to know each other, they went through the program together, they graduated together. And then they applied to law school, not knowing that each other was applying. And when they applied, they both got accepted together. And then they went through law school together and they graduated together. And then they applied for their law exam and they passed it together. And they came by to tell me that they're opening up their law practice together. I says, oh my goodness gracious. And they're getting married this year to different young ladies. And I'm waiting. I'm waiting to get the invitation, but how can you tell a better story than that? And they were excited and they said, and I don't mean to offend any attorneys in here, so don't get mad at us. They said, your program helped it make us a lot easier than law school was. So we had, each year, we have sometimes when Dr. Furlong was here, we'd have 24 other colleges come down and look at our program. And they'd say, what is it that you're doing? And they'd make notes upon notes upon notes. And I'm talking about major colleges and universities. We teach practical and job-ready. We do not teach political. It doesn't make any difference to me where your ideology is. It makes a difference to me how you do the job. So one of the examples we give, if you have 5,000 people coming at you at the border, I don't care what administration's in office, how are you going to house, clothe, and feed and provide medical care? If you can't do that, then you're not listening to what we're teaching in this program. Mr. Horn, who's not very animated most of the time, was very animated, and he came up and he said, I have to tell you, I have to tell you, I have to tell you. Yes, sir. What do you, he says, your people are job-ready. Well, that couldn't be a better compliment coming from him. We have openings for our students in multiple agencies. They're employed across the country and they're employed in other countries. We planned before COVID to launch our program statewide and then to prepare to do it nationally. I think our numbers will go up significant, but I'm proud of our numbers. We have never taken a dip since we started. Steady Eddie, not leaps and bounds, but steady Eddie. And so I'm looking forward to the chance to do that. So here's two examples of stories. Now, it was hard to pick the two. That was one, and there's another one. There we go. Mr. Hadera, oh my gosh. I don't know how to say the words. A quiet, unassuming gentleman. When he would speak, everybody would listen. He came in with a purpose. He went through the program. We connected him up with USF. He finished there and he went back and is doing exactly what he determined to do when he came here. He said, I want to improve the education and the nutrition for young people in my country. And he says, I know my country has corruption issues. I know we have challenges over there, I know it's safety issues. And we had a little webinar with him, was it last month, I think, earlier this month? And at the end, if you were in touch by what he's doing with those kids, he had the kids on. We're going to do it again, by the way, in April, so we'll send you the link if you'd like to see what he has to offer. But you wanted to hug every one of those kids. Their hearts were pure, their excitement was real, and there he is, Mr. Hadera, sitting there, making a difference in his hometown of Timbuktu. I didn't know there was a Timbuktu, but Timbuktu, Mali, Africa. So we're proud of our students. I'm here to celebrate with you on that. Looking forward to the next venture once COVID is a thing of the past and want to come back again to show you what happens when we go statewide and nationally. Any questions that you might have?
Any questions?
Uh-oh. No questions.
Yeah, it's all good. Excellent. We have several items on our consent agenda, including the acceptance of administrative matters, academic matters, the academic calendar. I had a question on the, did we change spring break on the academic calendar to align with public schools?
Not this year. We did not.
For this calendar, no?
No, but we, Dr. Leon Trof and I spoke yesterday, yesterday's Monday, about trying to align with the school district. They're working on their next two-year calendar, the school district is. And so we'll get that and look at ours. Sometimes their spring break happens far later into our second six-week term, and that causes a challenge, our second eight-week term. And so that causes a challenge, but we're going to get their next two-year spring break dates, and we're going to see if we can come together on that.
I just think it's real important. I think it would be a huge help to both the faculty and staff and the students with kids in school. We have such a population that have children, if we can align that. I mean, having these back-to-back like we did is, I think, a real challenge, so...
We'll give it our best shot to see how we can do that and keep our second eight-week semester.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about consent items? And if not, is there a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Informational reports? I don't know if trustee Kidwell or vice chair Bellows...
Yeah, I spoke with Dr. Teresa Wilkins about a week and a half ago. I think there's some big things happening there that will be revealed moving forward, but I continue to maintain she does a great job and it's not an easy position that she's in. So I've enjoyed getting to know her and being a part of it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. And if, any other questions before we move to president's report?
No report. I SPS, we're good.
I mean, it's, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything. Continuing to work closely with Kimberly and do our best to meet the goals that we set forth for the institute. Great. Don't want to leave you out on a foundation update if you'd like to share.
No updates today.
Okay. Dr. Williams, moving on to the president's report.
Thank you so much. You know, this week is the fourth week of the legislative session. The governor believes we will actually end on time in April, so we have a short window to impact any change that we would like to do. For the last two months, we've met with all of our legislative delegates, including Speaker Sprouse, about our goals for this legislative session, the two initiatives that we're asking for assistance on. And so far, the simulated city, the one that we submitted for the police academy piece, that is moving forward. The Midtown piece is still, there's still some traction there, and we believe that we'll be able to get it in the House or Senate before end. We've got some things that we're working on to make that happen. There are several bills that we are monitoring right now. Some bills we're weighing in on because it has an impact on the institution, but the largest ones are the ones with bright futures, dual enrollment, intellectual freedom and viewpoint diversity, and a workforce-related programming bill and more. And so I'm very proud of our lobbying firm, as well as Arid and Jackie, thank you for stepping in while Arid was out. You did a fantastic job to keep our bills alive and to keep us informed and with opportunities for us to weigh in on those issues. I do plan on sending something out to the board and to the college family about what's happening legislatively and what bills are causing us some concern, just to make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on and what we're doing there. With the budget legislatively, we do, we have been told that the 6% holdback funds may be returned to us in the next budget year, so we hope that that does happen. But nonetheless, the state is still struggling and we do expect some budget cut. So we're still working forward on possibly up to a 10%. We're just planning for that, Madam Chair, to be prepared for the next budget cut that's coming. That's it legislatively. What's been happening around the college, March 1st and 2nd, we held our town hall meetings to share with the college the notion of reinventing, reimagining SPC going forward, looking at how we can continue to work more efficiently and effectively, which will include some restructuring, looking at programs that we're offering, policies and processes, and how we can continue to move the college forward with transformation. We opened the town hall to employee questions, the questions that we did not get to. We did gather and we're doing a Q and A to send out to the college family to answer all of those questions. The strategic plan is moving right along. We have been having our meetings with the college family to get their input, to make sure that all have had a chance to share before we bring the final plan to you. And the plan will follow your advice and what you've given us from the beginning when you worked with now-President Pumari Agar. The sale of district office is on track. The president's suite has been totally dismantled. I believe we're homeless for this week. We're basically working from home and will be at downtown next week. We will be in our offices downtown. The team that's moving over to EpiTech, I think we're pretty much done or getting done. And then the technology team is forthcoming. We do believe we'll close on DO around April 30th. And our tech team, we believe we're in advance to where we thought we'd be and may not have to stay longer than we anticipated or pay rent. So we'll keep you focused on that.
Can I just ask, will you give the rundown of where all of technology's coming to Clearwater or EpiTech and everybody else is going downtown?
You mean like everywhere everyone's going? Can I email you that?
Oh, of course. I just, yeah, I just thought generally it would be good for us to know.
Well, we know technology is moving to Clearwater. The president's office, legal, accounting are all moving to DO, are all moving downtown. I'm trying to make sure I get this right, Jackie. And the foundation are moving downtown. And who's moving over to the Epi building? Is it more back office accounting?
Human resources.
Human resources. They're moving over to Epi.
Thank you.
Sorry I didn't...
No, I just thought it would be interesting for us to know who was going there.
We'll make sure you get the detail.
And we don't need that many details.
Last month, we came to you asking for permission for us to engage with the Tarpon parcel. We are moving down the line with that. There was a meeting recently on county, with the county on options for the ingress and egress that has taken place. The buyer sent a contract to Suzanne, who's reviewed it, sent it back. I think Melissa has that at this point. We're hoping next month to come back to you with a plan and agreement, asking for your approval to deem the property as unnecessary for educational purposes and to approve us doing the spot survey to dispose and get moving on that. May graduation is going to be both virtual and face-to-face. So we're going to do a hybrid. We'll have our same virtual program as we did last graduation, but we're going to choose, I think there are six campuses that will be holding what's called a grad walk, because the students want to walk across the stage. They want to receive their diplomas with their families. They want to get pictures. And so we'll be doing that at Clearwater, HEC, Gibbs, Tarpon, Seminole, and Midtown, I believe. And the walk will be during the week of May 10th, so it'll be different dates and times. We invite the board to come join us to be able to help do what we've done at regular graduation and hand out the diploma covers so that they can walk across the stage. Our provosts and deans and our vice presidents will help because we all can't be at the campuses all at the same time. And so I'll participate as much as I can, but I'm hoping that the board will choose a site and be there to help support. So we're going to do a hybrid this time. Our students really miss walking across the stage. And it's not going to cost the college anything because we'll be on our own campuses and we won't have to worry about rain dates.
Great.
Where are the sites?
The sites are Clearwater, Health Education Center, Gibbs, Tarpon, Seminole, and Midtown.
I participated in this last year and it was, I mean, graduation is always a highlight, but last year, it was really fun. It was such a celebration and the graduates were able to walk across the stage. I participated in this last year, and it was, I mean, graduation is always a highlight, but last year, it was really fun. It was such a celebration, and the graduates were able to walk across stage with their families, even on a couple of the campuses, and just having them all together and seeing the enthusiasm, especially the multi-generational families that came in. I mean, it was wonderful fun, so.
It really was.
Hopefully, maybe we can each sign up, once the dates are finalized, we can each sign up to be sure at least one of us is on each campus during that week, please.
Yeah, the sooner we can get the dates in time, the better.
We have it. I'll send that, we'll send that out today. And that is my report.
Wonderful. So just a reminder that we do have a brief breakout with our strategic planning. We're wrapping that up for our final strategic plan, so each of you, Dr. Williams can remind everyone which, where they're going. But is there any other business before we go into our breakout groups? We have, Rebecca's been busy getting stuff on our calendars, so please double-check and look at our weekly update from Jackie because we have a couple special meetings coming up, a couple extra opportunities that we just need participation on, so.
Thank you so much. And so trustee Gibbons, you have academic excellence. Trustee Stonecye for economic mobility. Trustee Bello, community engagement. Trustee Cole, Chair Cole, employee experience. And trustee Kidwell, financial vitality. And are we going to put what rooms?
There we go.
And there are your room numbers.
This building.
In this building.
Wonderful. With no other business, we will adjourn to these meetings. Thank you.